Hopefully Judy's quick, we'll be out in a half hour.
No pressure Judy.
That's because of that she's gonna talk for half an hour.
I know.
Okay, we're back. Welcome to Tuesday, December 18th, 2018, Board of -- meeting of the Rockland Board of Selectmen. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Kara, will you do the honors?
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video on-demand viewing at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion, as are other recently recorded meetings and community events. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. First item on the agenda is community announcements.
I don't have any community announcements for this evening.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is open session minutes of December 4th, 2018.
I make a motion to approve the open session minutes of December 4th, 2018.
I have a motion.
A second.
I have a second. All those in favor?
Vote.
Second on the minutes is the executive session minutes of December 4th, 2018.
I make a motion to approve the executive session minutes of December 14th and not be released until the matter settled.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? That's a vote. Okay. Interim Town Accountant Update, Item 4.
Mr. Chairman, I have a brief update for the Board on the Town Accountant Search Committee. Unfortunately, we haven't yielded any viable finalists at this point for the Board to interview. So we have, working with Human Resources Director Stacy Callahan and the committee that you all appointed, we have decided as a committee to extend the posting on the MMA website and in print, also on some town accountant technical sites for another 30 days and try, hope that we gain some more resumes to consider. And if we don't make any progress with that, we'll reconvene after the holidays and try to come up with some more ideas for how we can search for a qualified town accountant. In the interim, Eric Kinshif, who's been doing a great job for us, will continue to serve the town two days a week. And he is doing a great job closing out the books, doing the budget forecasting, and getting us ready for the new budget season. So the town is in good hands.
Any questions?
No.
No.
Okay. Item number five, review the warrant articles for the special town meeting.
So if I may, you did review the warrant articles at your last meeting, but the dollar figures were not in the warrant yet. This is the final warrant that will be posted tomorrow with your approval tonight. You'll see when you review it that the dollar amounts that we're asking, that the voters will consider transferring at the special town meeting have been asserted for your review. Not much else has changed from the original version that you looked at two weeks ago.
Right, just the actual dollar amount, each article.
Yes, exactly.
And a finding source, yep.
And you did refer to the Finance Committee, and they did vote to approve each of the articles as recommended to special town meeting.
And once, a quick question, Mr. Chairman, once
This is approved, like I assume like we'll be able to get it up on the website so people will be able to, you know, take a look and
Sure, so tomorrow, Mr. Mullen, we will, we have your signatures after you review it one more time tonight. We'll post it, call the constables to put it up at all the proper places around town. We'll post it on the website, we'll have it up on the Town Hall bulletin board, and the newspaper ad will be in the paper on Friday.
Awesome. Of course WATD will promote this for us as well.
And again, we're really hoping that we'll have a quorum of at least 150 voters to come out and support us at the special town meeting.
Any questions? Any comments?
No. Do we need a motion to approve this or?
You don't need to approve it.
I think we did last, already just pending.
Okay, okay.
I mean, my only comment on this is, it's, we talked about it last time, it's critical that people come out. We need to have these 150 people. This is not, we're not asking for an additional $400,000. This is money that's already in the budget, it's just being reallocated so we can pay the bills legally.
I think it's also important to remember that this wasn't, this wasn't caused by anybody on this board currently. This was caused by some people that made some mistakes in the past. And we're trying to correct those issues so we can pay the budget going forward.
And like in one thing, like I was actually gonna hold this until the end, but I mean like to that same point, one of the things that I really believe of this board and the Town Hall, and so many people in Rockland have done the past six months, is, you know, to really move on and to rise above all this whole mess. E and G, like in terms of doing that, like moving forward as a town, this is exactly what has to be done as the next step in that process.
This is, this is the plan to move us forward.
Yes, so it's, like as Rich said, it's just very, very crucial and hopefully we'll have some our positive, and I wish I could talk to you, but positive energy and, you know, positive movement. And we'll just, you know, keep moving forward as a town and what we always do, so. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Do we need to read these articles in the meeting or no?
No, we read them in
No, we read them last time.
Okay, we just didn't do them.
They'll be posted at the location. Okay, next on the agenda, number six, tax collector update. Judy Hartigan.
Welcome, Mrs. Hartigan.
Thank you very much.
7:03.
And go.
Okay, I'm here to give you an update of our department, which is the tax collecting office. I would like to preface my presentation with the fact that we are solvent, we are strong, we are moving forward, we have not missed a beat. We are working very well with our financial team. Mr. Kinshif has been wonderful in serving as an interim accountant and helping us close our books. That being said, let me pre, let me explain basically what we are doing in the collector's office. We are entering the actual billing period of FY19. Your Christmas cards, which basically are your actual bills, are being mailed on December 26th. The tax rate, as Debbie has mentioned in the last meeting, was $17.92. And while it was a reval year, some people may see a moderate decrease in their taxes, which is actually kind of a nice thing. The due dates are February 1st and May 1st, and that will complete fiscal year 2019. In February, we will send out approximately 17,000 excise tax bills between mid to late February, as soon as we get the commitment from the Registry of Motor Vehicles. That is our biggest commitment, our biggest revenue generator for motor vehicle. So that's our billing process. We, we work in conjunction with the assessors very closely. Debbie gets the rate certified, we work with the town accountant. I get the rate, the assessed values, and produce the bills. It's as simple as that. 6,158 real estate bills went out, 328 personal property tax bills went out. People would like to know the difference sometimes. What's the difference between personal property and real estate? Some people use it in conjunction with each other. Real estate is your residential bill. Personal property is the tax that is brought on the contents of a business. So whatever the contents of your business are, that, that, those, that contact, contact is taxed, and therefore becomes your personal property tax. So that being said, I would like to move on to what I think is one of the most significant things in our revenue producing is tax title. We are current with all our tax takings. We are up to FY17 and our subsequent for FY18. So what we did, or what we accomplished, we went from 121 delinquencies that would have gone to tax title, and we did 16 takings. How did we accomplish that? Well, we accomplished that by working with people, allowing people to go on payment plans, educating people and let them know they don't have to pay their entire bill if they want to pay it throughout the year, recognizing the fact that it does carry a 14% interest rate. We can open up the lines of communication to put people on a payment plan and effectively get the monies in without having the town take the task of going to tax taking, which is costly. We have to advertise. It is, it's not a cheap endeavor to take, put a property into tax title. And one of the least favored things that a tax collector has to do frankly is, is to move a property into tax title. So basically, what, our big thing is that we, we do work with people and we, we try to help them as best we can and still bring the revenues in to the town in a productive fashion. Working for 2018, we are currently, I'm currently working with 128 delinquencies. I expect to significantly get that down to at least 16, 15 again. It's typically worked its way out that way. We had a tremendous amount of property sales and movements in the town this fiscal year, which meant that there was a, we had a dramatic increase in our municipal lien certificates. What a municipal lien certificate is, is if you are a real estate agent or a bank and a customer is refinancing or selling, they send us a request for municipal lien certificate which costs $50. And basically, it's a legalized, it's a legal document that is registered at the Registry of Deeds. It costs $50, and we have seen tremendously increased revenue by virtue of the sales and the refinancing efforts of the residents in the town. So those have increased significantly. I'm working with personal property. Personal property is, in its own right, very difficult to collect. Personal property, there is really not any legislation set that allows you to, you can't put personal property into tax title. Personal property has to be collected all on its own, and personal property, if it's not collected, ultimately becomes abated. So in our effort to work with, trying to successfully collect personal property on a more comprehensive basis, we are working with the Building Department, the Town Clerk, and the Board of Health to kind of comprehensively get together to say, if you're applying for a business certificate, or a building permit, or any other licensing, you have to make sure your personal property taxes are paid. That has, that has been, done a dramatic, played a dramatic positive role in the collection of personal property. We do withhold those, without, the last person that it comes to is the collector. After the approval of the collector, then that business certificate or that building permit is then given out to the person that's requested it. That, we've made great strides in that. Our big stuff moving forward in January of 2019, we have a pretty healthy, which I would like to be healthier, online banking system. It's time for us to move into the 21st century frankly. We take a lot of cash at the window. And so what our online banking system will allow us to do, we already have online banking, but it's not as healthy as I would like it to be. Our online system is called MCC, which is Metropolitan Communications, and they do, they also do our billing for our tax bills. We save a tremendous amount of money because our deputy collector, who we hire to do our collecting for excise tax and our tax takings pays for our bills to be produced. We don't pay for the printing of the bills, the deputy collector pays that. So with MCC, we are moving into the cloud, which I've been working with Gino, our new IT person, and we're going to migrate from the MCC platform to the MCC cloud. What that means to the general populace is, right now, if you don't pay your bill online and you pay it through the tax office, you can't go online to see that your bill is paid. When we migrate to the cloud, no matter how you pay it, it's integrated with our municipal system. So if you pay tomorrow, there's a nightly download every night onto the cloud that will say, when I call up my bill, yes, your bill was paid. So that people are able to see their bill, monitor their bill, and it will also calculate interest on delinquent bills on a daily basis. So it will calculate that 14%, which is a huge step for us because it, it would require a separate and distinct download each time we wanted to upgrade our online banking. Now that's for motor vehicle, real estate, and personal property. On the water, sewer, and trash side, because we're the town, I'm the town collector, we collect for everything. The water, sewer, and trash has an online banking system called Unibank. So if you logged on to the tax collector at rocklandmass.gov, you see in the right-hand corner, Pay Real Estate and Property Taxes or Water, Sewer, and Trash. Click on either one of those links, it brings you right to one of those two online systems. Unibank is a bank, and MCC is not a bank. So MCC, there's a little bit of a delay in the nightly cycle through their ACH. They have to, it has to go through the nightly cycle for it to be a confirmed transaction. The cloud will eliminate some of that. The reason why I like to use tandem banking systems is I'm a fan of not putting all our eggs in one basket. I kind of like dueling vendors. I think you get more bang for your buck, and I like both systems very much. That being said, we had a very productive meeting with the schools this year. Jane Hackett and Tim Wells reached out to us, as well as with John Ellard, and said, we would like to bring everything together to make reconciliation easier and to make it easier for the schools. So what I did was I coordinated both MCC and Unibank to come and do a presentation to the schools to let them know what they had to offer. They wanted to incorporate things like, they wanted to streamline their billing process, and they wanted to incorporate things like sport fees, lunches, bus fees, any sort of fee that the school has. And what they did was, after the coordinated meetings, they've chosen to go with MCC, which is nice because it affords them the capability of a good line, online system, but it affords them the capability of having people that know the system internally, that we can help with any sort of conversion and anything that, that may happen during that conversion. It also helps tremendously with John and his reconciliation. It's just a matter of setting up a new account for the schools to segregate the school population receipts from my receipts from, Donna actually uses it for dog licenses as well. So they chose MCC, and I think that was a, I think that was a really good choice. The big thing after we migrate onto the cloud is we are finally rolling out debit and credit at the collector's window. Yee-haw. Far too many people, there's been a lot of activity, a lot of questions, a lot of people pulling out a debit card and being told, sorry, we only take cash or check. Those days will soon be over.
When would that start?
I'm hoping by February. I'm hoping that we, it will take us, it depends on when. We're gonna use Unibank for that source, because they're a bank. It's a simple swipe at the window, and they have, it's a downloaded fee directly. We get a nightly, the same way we get from our online banking now. So we really won't miss a beat, except that the venue is different. You're not on your computer, you're in a swipe with a chip and the whole nine yards. And it will produce the reporting that we need. But it will also, more importantly, give the customer the convenience that they want. To have someone leave, to go over to Rockland Credit Union to come back with cash is, is an inconvenience. And it's, it's rightfully needed to be addressed and fixed. It also eliminates, what I want to try to eliminate, is the amount of cash that we take in at the window. It's, 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 it's a process that you, you, all, taking cash is always, you always do a risk assessment with your, your office, especially with collections, and especially with tax collecting in the tax collector's office. And in doing a risk assessment, the first thing that pops out at you is cash. And so one of the things to remedy this was, let's move away from the cash arena and get into debit and credit where people want to. I think it will also generate a more, I mean, we've got, we've got a lot of millennials that are in, and they've got points on their credit cards, and they want to do it on credit cards. And you, you find that your payment activity is, I think, is going to increase. Maybe not significantly at the very beginning, but I think as we move more toward credit and debit, you're going to see the revenues increase more significantly. People find it, and I, I actually instruct people that if you pay with a credit card and you have a low interest rate versus a 14% interest rate on a tax bill, you guys, I can't tell you what to do, but you make that decision. Either way, we're getting the revenue. And the last thing we're doing, which is probably a pipe dream, but looking at potentially a split tax rate. We've talked about it, we've, we've looked at it, we've, I've addressed it with Debbie. There's, there's a lot of pros and cons to, to a split tax rate. It's a, it's, I think it's a productive move. I think that there's ways to, we talked about this at, at your last meeting, but there's ways to tax your commercial properties, but also give them a break on their personal property side. Again, their personal property is the contents of their business. There's ways to kind of, kind of give them a compromise. And not, not to dismiss the fact that it also helps the burden on your residences. That being said, that's what we do. We continuously do it every day. We are very busy right now. Tax bills just went out. So we expect anywhere between, between the number of phone calls and the exemptions and people making sure their exemptions hit, and their evatements are on their bills, and instructing them as how that happens and how it works. And then getting ready for the February 1st crunch of the RMV motor vehicles. And that, that's pretty much our winter, but, so that's kind of what we're doing moving forward. And I think it's all productive, and just to reiterate, we're, 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 we're good. We're solvent, we're, we're okay. And it's a great staff, they're, they're, they're wonderful to work with, and it's, the financial staff is fabulous too, and we're, we're moving forward and we're, we're pressing along. We're doing well, so. Do you guys have any questions?
Any comments?
I do. So Judy, thank you.
You're welcome.
On the debit and credit card, obviously we're gonna incur fees on that. How does that all work?
The fee works just the same way as it works online. It is a convenience fee that is absorbed by the customer.
It is, okay.
And you are, you are instructed, at the very end, just like you're on Amazon, you have your cart, and you go to close out, and you are told, you have a convenience fee. It's 35 cents if you do it through ACH, which is cheaper than a stamp. It's a sliding scale for credit cards. Credit cards are pretty hefty. It's $35 at the start, it depends, American Express is the heaviest, but the convenience fee is passed on to the customer knowingly. You can back out of the transaction if you choose not to continue. So the town does not absorb that fee. It is, it is exactly the way it is on, on the online system. So we are not absorbing any of that.
So it's the same with like water, sewer, and trash when you pay it online?
Exactly. Yep. All the same. And we get, and we get the same downloads from both systems and funnel it over and turn it over to John. And it's, it's as simple as that. Is that fast enough, Mike?
That was perfect, and it was fascinating as well, so.
Fascinating? You're fascinated by me?
There you go.
Oh, I'm thrilled.
So, but no, seriously, thank you for
You're welcome. Anytime, you guys, and if you ever have a question, contact us.
You're the part, very encouraging. Love to hear town departments working together to solve and make things better.
And I think, I think, I think if I can add lib a little bit, there's a silver lining in everything. I think despite what, what we've traveled through together on this journey, it's made us more cohesive, it's made us more thought-provoking, it's made us more determined to be, to be the type of town that we know we are. And, and I think that, that, you know, you take, you take something and you learn from it. You fall on your face, and, and it was a tough journey, but I think the important thing that comes out of all of it is that, is that there is, there is the strength in this entire Town Hall. There are people that are working so hard and tremendously together for a common good, and that message can't be put out there more often. I mean, it's, it's, we're really, we're really, despite everything, we're really charging forward.
I do want to just take a second and applaud you for, for coming forward to talk to us. You're not a department that specifically answers to the Board. You're in an elected position. You made that decision on your own to come forward, talk to us, and tell the people of the town what it is that you're doing in your department, and what's going on in their tax collector's office.
Well, it's
I wish more departments
So it's starting to happen. I encourage every department, you know.
And I, and I do too, and I am a firm believer that, that communication is key. And if you give people the knowledge and the wherewithal to understand what, where their tax dollars are going, how they're being collected, it, it takes a little bit of, not the mystery, but a little bit of the, the angst away from, why are my taxes going up? And why is this happening? And this is because of this. And I, I think it, it helps people to understand, because the bottom line is, aside from your family, the most significant thing in your life are your assets. It's your home, it's, it's your, it's your, your livelihood, it's what you're pouring all your money into. And, and taxes are right up there. And if it's not, if you're not comfortable with the people behind the scenes doing the work that's supposed to be doing from the people that put you here, then you're doing them a disservice on a, on a customer service level. And that's, that's the bottom line.
Thank you, Judy.
And so thank you, and
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, next on the agenda, Ms. Nyman.
Come on, I always get stuck with this long list. Common Vicshire, McDonald's, 117 Market Street, Dunkin' Donuts, 1149 Hingham Street, Dunkin' Donuts, 851 Hingham Street, Magoo's Ice Cream, 190 VFW Drive, Honeydew, 482 Market Street, Fire Bowl, 928 Hingham Street, Bella's Restaurant, 933 Hingham Street, Themis Pizza, 488 Market Street, TK O'Shares, 934 Hingham Street, Knights of Columbus, 440 Webster Street, Little Bangkok, 100 Market Street, Brumanos, 1, I mean, 440 Union Street, and Mary Lou's Coffee, 200 Webster Street. And then under automatic amusement, we have the Knights of Columbus, 440 Webster Street, TK O'Shares, 934 Hingham Street, and the Rockland Ice Rank, 599 Summer Street. For entertainment, we have Bella's Restaurant, 933 Hingham Street, Knights of Columbus, 440 Webster Street, TK O'Shares, 934 Hingham Street, Rockland Ice Rank, 599 Summer Street, and Themis Pizza at 488 Market Street. For in holder, we have the Comfort Inn at 850 Hingham Street, Lodging, 5 Union Street Trust, 5 Union Street, and the Triangle House, 167 West Water Street. For Class 1, South Shore BMW Mini, 1040 Hingham Street. Class 2, we have Atlantic Automotive, 50 John Donne Memorial Drive, Southern Auto Sales, 189 VFW Drive, Rockland Auto Brokers, 250 Webster Street, Advanced Auto Center, 409 VFW Drive, B1 Automotive Trade Center, 240 Center Ave, and NNR Automotive, 31 East Water Street. For livery and taxi cab, we have Robyn's Livery, 109 Hartstuf Street, Town Coach Limo, 548 Forest Street, and not but last, not, you know, last but not least, Junk and Used Dealer, no slot, I can't say, I can't do that word. Game, 155 Union Street.
Make a motion to approve pending all obligations having been met.
I will second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I think next time we should split it up.
Yeah, next time we will.
Not it, that would take me 10 minutes.
I agree. All right, next on the agenda, alcohol license change of DBA, Sam's Food Store and Smoke Shop, 200 VFW Drive. Does anybody here from DBA? Go on once, no?
No one's here?
This is basically a doing business as license change for a name change from Sam's Food Store to Sam's Food Store and Smoke Shop.
No change in the ownership group?
No change in the ownership.
It's just a DBA change.
No, no public hearing required. It's really just a slight change to the name to include the smoke shop.
As they've added some items. There you go.
All the paperwork works in order and it's been signed off on by Attorney Galvin. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion or have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Next on the agenda, needed the late night hours request.
This is a request from the Eagles to stay open until 2:00 AM on New Year's Eve and Ms. Ide and our office had told me that in past years, the board had actually expanded this to include all food establishments in town, so-
Like if they request-
If they, if they come forward to request, as the Eagles have done, to stay open late, that we would have one blanket motion to approve.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we, we know which establishments specifically that they ask us anyway.
They would come forward individually, we would keep a list and we would make sure that the Rockland police are also notified.
Perfect. All right, I'll make, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Okay, agenda item number 10, charter by law committee discussion. Ms. Birmingham.
This agenda item was put on the agenda at the quest of a couple of members of the Board of Selectmen because there has been some discussion individually about the idea of resurrecting the Charter by law review committee, which currently, I believe, only has one appointed member in place. So, it's really just for open discussion for the board to decide if you'd like to encourage residents to submit committee interest forms to start that committee again, to consider some charter review that might be possible to put forward for town meeting warrant. Things as simple as changing some of the language in the charter that may be not gender neutral, that may, that might be outdated at this point, to some of the other bigger issues that we've seen have been challenging for doing town daily business because of the charter restrictions.
No, this is, this is something that's, that's, that's high on my list. I really think that for the benefit of the town long-term is to do a review of the charter. And, you know, as part of this, this is, this is where the residents really get a say. Trying to get people on this committee. You can, you can make a change on, on how this town is run. You know, it could be as simple as, you know, little changes in the, in the terminology of the existing charter, all the way to, you know, how we, jobs that we have, how we do things. You know, when you look at it, you know, as I started looking at it, there are some antiquated things in that charter that I think particularly as we're facing hiring a town administrator and a town accounting, accountant, the charter is, is going to restrict to some extent the candidates that we're going to be able to, to attract. So, you know, this is not, in my opinion, it's not tear up the charter and throw it away. It's, we need to look at each thing and make some tweaks that are going to be beneficial to the town. Now, to do that, we need, we need residents to step up.
Any further discussion? Mr. Mullin?
Just a few thoughts. I mean, I completely agree with the need our to resurrect a charter by law committee. One thing, and I mean, the first part of November, we talked about this briefly and then, like as everything, like we just saw, had a bunch of things happen, like it never got to it, but like I think, oh, before we do this, or like while we're like beginning our to plan for this, oh, like this board should really have a conversation about, oh, kind of all our goals and where we are with them. Our town meeting this year, I like allocated a 40 grand hour to begin like a master plan process as well. And with the, my only thought is the two things. One, like I think we need to do it and our it's long overdue, but we should have our kind of, oh, you know, like a, oh, like a visioning or like a type of like priority setting, our meeting, where we prioritize all these issues. I mean, we have master planning, we have like a town accountant search, we have a town administrator search, we have the budget, the warrant process, the whole host of other things. The other thing that I would throw out there because like I think they're pretty similar, like with the master plan, we have MAPC that has actually, oh, and honestly, thanks to Marcy's efforts, they're contributing our $15,000, like not only that, they're providing our some technical assistance. One thing I would like to talk about further, like if we're going to have a real, our charter discussion, like it might be also worth having a conversation about our engaging, I'm a group like the Collin Center from UMass Boston. And so, if we're going to open up the charter, you know, like it does have some ramifications that I believe, oh, you know, like are as fundamental to what we do as like a master plan. And you're like, we might, it might be helpful to have some, oh, you know, a committee made up of residents, but to make it a priority for this board to, oh, to allocate some funding to that process, to have some technical expertise.
Some guidance and some, I agree 100%.
Yeah, so we can compare and contrast what other, like similar size, our towns are doing, like how they're structured. I mean, and, and, you know, we want, and Rockland to be unique, but we also want it to be all modern day and practical as well, so that we're able to compete. And so, those are only, and my thoughts, but, and again, like I'm all for, but I think our, our, like as we move our closer, like in forward on doing it, like I think we should all be strategic, I guess, about how we do it and, you know, how we allocate and, you know, where it falls frankly in the priority between now and April with everything we have to do. And also, like if we, our could allocate our some funding for that, a technical assistance piece as well, if that makes sense.
Well, I think from a, from a priority standpoint, so we're already seeing, or we're seeing some of the obstacles that, that we face. So, not saying that the town accountant, you know, one of the reasons why we haven't been able to find quality individuals, one is good accounting, good economy, tight job market certainly doesn't help, but the job itself and what we ask to do versus what the job title is certainly impacts the, the candidates when they're looking at that. You know, while we have a town accountant, the needs are closer to a director of finance. So, if, if someone's looking through that and sees town accountant and they may have the qualifications, they're not going to look, they're not going to look at it, they're going to bypass it. You know, I think something that we're going to face shortly from the town administrator is a little quirk in the, in the charter that in the first year, no matter what your experience is, you're, you know, you're under, you know, one year-
Probation.
Probation, no matter what. So, to try to attract someone from another town that may have experience and wants to take that next step, are they going to leave a three-year contract to go to have a one-year probationary period? So, those are just some of the things that I look at, why I think this is one of the, one of the high priorities. But Mike, do you point master plan?
We absolutely need to do that, but we also, and not to rush into things, but we need to start to act, you know, it, more than, more than just discussions. So, one of the things why I wanted to bring up here, we have one person on the charter committee. Well, if we can't get people to volunteer, then we really can't get this going no matter what. So, part of this is, you know, do we have people in town that really want to be a part of this? You know, I, I've heard enough over the last six months, how people aren't happy with things that are going on, continue to see it on social media. Well, here's your opportunity, you know? If you, if you really want to make a difference in the town you live in, here, here's something that you can actually do and be impactful for the long-term of this town.
Sir?
Did I hear you correctly that you said there's only one person on the charter commission?
Right now.
Committee right now?
Yeah.
How long has it been like that?
I think the last one expired at the beginning of the year and we appointed one this past summer. Prior to that, there were only, for years, there were only three people total.
And how many are you looking for?
I'd say five to seven.
And that, and that, that committee is not, is not dissimilar to a lot of other committees in town.
We have openings on our finance committee.
No, I'm just surprised that there's only one person on.
Yeah. Most committees aren't full.
Yeah.
You know, that, that, that committee can be extremely impactful. Finance committee can be extremely impactful. If you really want to make changes in the town, you know, the finance committee, I think, has eight right now?
Yeah, I think they're up to 10 now. They just got, I think, one or two more members.
Oh, that's right, okay. But there's still five openings.
There's 11, I think there's two people that are out with injuries, so.
All right.
But yeah, there's definitely some openings in, in the town to Rich's point, so I encourage anybody to come forward and if you want to ask, I've had people approach me all the time, asking what committees are open. I tell them and then we just don't, it doesn't seem to materialize in, in an application. So, if you know somebody, or to Rich's point, I think we've all heard about it all summer, about how frustrated people are with the goings on in the town. To Rich's point, again, you know, it's, that's how you change it, is get involved, so.
It's our town, it just doesn't happen by osmosis. You gotta take a, gotta take an active role.
Anybody else?
So, does that committee even meet, really?
No.
No?
No. They, they, yeah, it's really, right now, it's just kind of waiting to, to be filled, I guess, in order to-
Do we have applications online for that?
We have committee interest forms available in the town clerk's office and I believe they're downloadable on the town website as well.
So, they're on the site for any of the, any of the committees?
And, and the committee hasn't been active in quite a while and as many of the appointments expired, people chose not to be reappointed. So, again, we're struggling with volunteerism and we would really like to appeal to the residents to get involved.
And Mike, to your point as well, you know, we talked, you're right, we, I think we were going to schedule something for November 27th or something like that and that just never materialized. But, you know, to the point, you know, we are a relatively new board, obviously, Rich and Karen, you guys just getting on. I, I think it is important for us to, to get together and set the priorities for, for the board, what the board's priorities are. We're in the process of looking for a, you know, town administrator and I think in the meantime, it's important to give Marcy what our priorities are as a board and we want to know what we want to look for in that, in that position, so. So, Marcy, if you can, I mean, just something to keep in mind, for one of our meetings, or, you know what, do we have a lot on the agenda on January 8th, the day after the-
No, we have a small agenda on January 8th.
So, let's do that, you know, I mean, we can, we can open up and then just have a brainstorm session.
What if each member comes to the meeting with like one or two bullet points over there?
Yeah, let's say five, let's say five priorities and then we'll-
A person?
Yeah, each person and we'll prioritize our list based on, you know, and this isn't new, this is what we tried to do with our passport and then things blew up, but-
Might be interesting to see how, you know, there might be a lot of similar thoughts.
And if we all have the same thing on the list, then clearly that's priority, you know what I mean? And then that becomes, you know, a priority for the entire board, not just the individual. So, so I think that's something we try to do going forward. And if Marcy sometime after, maybe January 8th, that might be a good one, because that's usually rather small, so.
It's a quiet meeting, but we do have special town meeting the night before, so I just didn't want to put too much on your plate, two nights in a row.
Well, hopefully, hopefully people show up early and we can get in and out of that, that meeting as well.
Quickly.
So, hopefully, we'll see.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's a great idea.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. There's one in every group, one in every group.
We have to keep them separated.
Yeah. All right, on to number 11, town administrator's report and correspondence.
So, I just have a couple of things for you this evening, similar to what we just talked about with extended hours on New Year's Eve. We had a request after the agenda was posted from Players, from Jackie who owns Players, and she's hoping that she can get the board's approval to open at 10:00 AM on New Year's Day to serve brunch, which is a slight extension of hours for Players and Jack's Cafe, so.
I'll entertain a motion?
I'll second.
I mean, I'll make a motion.
Okay. I have a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
With the understanding that anyone else who requests-
With the understanding that anybody else, yes, absolutely.
Yes, same, same principle applies.
That's a, that's a great idea, Mr. Mullin.
Okay.
Thank you.
The only other remarks I have for you are just, I wanted to take a minute-
Do we take a vote?
Yeah.
You did. Do we have a vote?
I have a motion.
Sorry, I just want to-
Make sure we're all covered.
Slip it away.
We wouldn't want Jackie to get in trouble when she opens for brunch. So, I just have a couple of other things. One is I wanted to take a minute to just thank Susan Ide, who's the executive assistant in our department. She's often the backbone of all of the work that we do and often goes without a lot of public recognition. But for the last three meetings, we have done numerous license renewals. So, I know the board knows and appreciates all of Sue's hard work, but I just want to take a minute to make sure that our community knows that they don't happen without a lot of effort going in behind the scenes. And Sue has done a great job this year putting together all these license renewals for all the businesses in town. And lastly, I just wanted to wish you all and our community happy holidays, a happy and safe holiday season. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. All right, on to selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Board of Selectmen and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Mr. Penny?
So, I'm going to have my first office hours this Thursday from 9:00 to 10:30. I'm going to do them at the senior center. So, Peg Bryan and her staff were gracious enough to set aside a spot for me, so I will be up there from 9:00 to 10:30. I welcome any residents to come up. If you have any comments, questions, concerns, anything, want to try to make, make ourselves available to you guys. And I hope, I hope I'm not sitting there for an hour and a half by myself, so come on up. And I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a happy and safe New Year.
Okay. Ms. Nyman?
I will be hosting another holiday breakfast this Friday, the 21st, at the Harmon Golf Course in conjunction with Greg Simeoni, who's the owner of Harmon. He's been thoughtful enough to put on this complimentary, complimentary breakfast for residents in town, so that'll be from 8:00 to 10:00 on Friday. You're all encouraged to attend if you would like to. And I wish you all a happy New Year and a Merry Christmas.
Okay. Okay, I don't really have all that much tonight. Oh, Mr. Mullin?
Yeah, that was a funny joke. Funny joke.
Looking out for you.
No, thank you, Karen. First of all, I just want to, this is our last meeting of 2018 and what a year it's been. And I'll thank our, for the 18th million time, Ms. Birmingham, our Sue Ide, all of everyone here at town hall, all our employees who have really, our kept the ship, our going strong this whole year and, and continue to do it. And our to this board, it's actually, it's, oh, like very like refreshing that we've, that we've come together like we have in the past month and a half and, you know, like I know, 2019, there are, oh, many, many, many more positive things ahead that I'm very excited about. But in addition to that, I just want to wish everyone, like a very Merry Christmas and like a great holiday season. And once again, I want to just, I'll thank Mr. Olafman, like in Mr. Ryan's absence tonight for just really going above and beyond as, as, oh, as the acting chairman. So, thank you, Mr. Olafman, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin, for keeping it brief, for the change. I just, a couple of things, I just want to thank Karen Hafner and Beth Brown from the library, Karen's with the Friends of the Rockland Library, for hosting- Karen's with the Friends of the Rockland Library for hosting Friends Reception this past week. All of us had a chance to attend for the most part and it was a great turnout. It's a beautiful venue and they do a great job up there keeping the library going. Also, Marcy and I had the pleasure of being invited by Peg Bryan and Eleanor Murphy to a tea party with the seniors this past Friday morning. And, uh, again, another great facility that we have in town. The turnout was, was incredible. A ton of people in there. Parking was very sparse and, uh, it was great turnout. So I also want to wish our chairman and friend, Larry Ryan, speedy recovery. He's been under the weather, so, uh, that's that. And then just everybody in town that celebrates, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And reiterate Mike Mullin's comments, Marcy and Sue are unsung heroines in, in the town hall. We appreciate all your hard work and look forward to continuing.
You did emphasize how much everyone's working together. It really is a team effort. It's a pleasure.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the last meeting of 2018.
I'll make a motion.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Nice having you. Thank you.